Good evening and welcome to the first of our in-focus candidate forums on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. I'm Eric Marsh, Executive Director of Whitewater Community Television. Glad you're able to join us for what will be a one-hour discussion with candidates running for Town Council for Milton. We will introduce you to them in just a little bit, as well as my co-hosts. Let's take care of a little business as we start this evening. First, want to remind you that Whitewater Community Television's annual membership meeting is coming up. If you are a member, or even if you're not a member, if you just want to find out what it is that we were doing during our last fiscal year, you're welcome to join us. We will be at the Innovation Center, beginning at 5:00 PM on September 17th. That is a Tuesday evening. We'll spend 45 minutes to an hour there, just kind of updating the community as to what we've been doing and how they can support us and how they can be involved with Whitewater Community Television. And we appreciate our sponsor for this year's annual meeting, the first time we've had one. Eastern Indiana Works, the Workforce Development Board for Region 6, so we appreciate their support. If you are going to be traveling I-70, if you've done it any time over the last couple of months, you know that it's a nightmare. It's been talked about for a while, where they're going to fix it, but they're going to take a couple of months to get it done. Lane closures begin tomorrow. Those run through November. They will be patching in about 10-mile increments from Mount Comfort Road all the way to the Ohio State Line. They will be working seven days a week. There will be lane restrictions throughout that time period, so please, if you're out there, expect some delays and also be careful with those crews that are out working. This is National Voter Registration Month. September is, and we want to remind you to definitely get registered to vote, not only for the municipal elections that are coming up, but also 2020, where there'll be Wayne County races, state races, and national races. You can register to vote very easily. Voter registration ends on October 7th. You can do that at the voter registration office, 301 East Main Street, or you can do it from the comfort of your home by going to indianavoters.com. That's indianavoters.com. You can check your voting status and find out voting locations online, or if you want to do it locally, you can find out some information by calling 973-9304, or visiting the clerk's office in the Wayne County Courthouse. Those folks are very nice and very eager to help you out. We are joined in partnership for these in-focus candidate forums by the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce, and this year, new to this partnership, Hometown Media Group. We appreciate their support. With me tonight, representing the Wayne County Area Chamber, President and CEO Melissa Vance. How are you?
Great.
Do you believe it's this time again?
It's another season, but it's always fun to be here with you.
You know it's fall when there's football. Bears are on tonight. And when we're talking with candidates, and we have four of the seven candidates running, Agnes Fisher, Joy May, Robert Simon, and Ryan Kobe, were nice enough to join us this evening. We appreciate it. We're going to start out by giving each of them about a minute to a minute and a half to just kind of introduce themselves, and then we'll kind of get into the questions, the fun part. So, Agnes, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you, first of all, for having us. I think this is good. My name is Agnes Fisher. I have lived in Milton for about 20 years. I've been on council for eight years now. Really enjoy it and hope maybe to be on council for the next four years, too. That depends on what the residents decide. I am retired. I have been retired for 10 years, so of course, eight of those years I have been on council because I have the time to do it, and I am very dedicated at helping the town in any way. I have two daughters. One has passed away. I have five grandchildren, and I have five great-grandchildren, to get in there and little personal life there. I don't know what else to say. I think I'm done.
Okay.
Okay?
Joy.
I'm Joy May. I've lived in Milton for 28 years. I've actually kind of been a lifetime resident. I live on the property that was my grandmother's. My mom was born and raised there. I went to school, elementary school, at the Milton School that was just torn down this last year. So I feel like I'm kind of a part of Milton, and even my son was fortunate enough to go to Milton for a couple of years before they closed the school. And I'm at a time in my life where I feel like I need to give back and would like to contribute, and I'd like to do what I can to better our community.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Robert Simon. I'm running for reelection for Milton Town Council, and I'd like to thank WCTV for hosting this event. It's so important that people get to see and know the candidates, who they're voting for. A lot of times, I think these local elections are overlooked, but they're so important because these are the people that, in small-town, town council, county council, mayoral races, they're the ones that make decisions that affect your lives on a daily basis. So I can't stress enough the importance of these local elections. I want to thank people of Milton for giving me the opportunity, the past four years, to serve them and help them with any issues they have. We accomplished quite a bit, quite a few things actually, over the past four years, and that's to the credit of the council. We all worked well together, and I look forward to another four years, and thank you.
Thank you. Ryan.
My name's Ryan Kobe. I was born in Indianapolis, but I've lived in Wayne County most of my life, primarily in Richmond. When our little man was born, my wife and I decided to move somewhere that was a little bit more our own, so we moved into Milton. We've been there close to two years now. We're creeping up on two years, and we love it. I've worked in education for over 12, 13 years, bachelors and masters, and absolutely love conversation. I love talking to folks and solving problems when I can. So this is an opportunity for me to give back to a community that's been very welcoming to my family, and really wanted to push out and try to take action with things that we noticed, that we could do better as a town, and we could participate in. So it's a pleasure to be here.
First of all, thank you all for putting your name on a ballot, for agreeing to go through this entire process, being willing to... Sometimes folks talk a lot, but they aren't willing to put themselves out there to, as you all are doing, really face the people and be voted on. So thank you for taking the time to do that. Now the fun part. We'll start some questioning with Melissa.
All right. There are proposed rate increases pending on water and sewer right now. Can you provide your thoughts on the amounts and reasoning behind the increases? Agnes, would you like to start?
I would love to discuss this. Yes, we will be voting at the September meeting on rate increases for all of our utilities. It is very much needed. We have our sewage delivered to, if I can use that term, and that is not the proper term, but it goes to Connersville anyway. And we are charged for the amount of sewage that goes to Connersville. We have been on sewer since 2010, I believe, and they have increased our rates every year by 3%. But the council has not increased any of the citizens' rates at any amount over that time period. I think I figured it up, and had the residents received the 3% increase, we would be paying right now $26 more, had the council not decided to not charge. Now it is a 5% increase that we are asking for. Connersville is charging us a 10% increase. We're hoping that we can get by without all of that being put on to the citizens. Our water, again, is a 5% increase. Our water, we have expenses, like old pipes. We've had major leaks recently. We just, within the last year or two, we had to paint and clean the water tower, which was, I think, $26,000. So we have to have money to do this, so this is why we have to have increases to maintain so that we can continue to take care of those problems. And our trash, we are going to have a 10% increase. Most of our trash deficit, which we are right now, about $22,000, comes from taking our trash to the dump. That is the major problem, not necessarily our equipment.
Thank you. Joy, would you like to comment?
I don't know how to elaborate on that. I've been on the council just a couple of months. I took an empty seat in June, so I'm learning as I go, but I had no idea, just as a resident, that we needed to make increases, but I can see it. It is a necessary step, and I think the residents need to understand that there are expenses that are out of our control, and that we have to make those increases to make the adjustments.
Thank you. Rob?
Well, as Agnes said, these increases were long overdue. In order to supply residents with these services, it costs money, and our costs increase every year, and we finally reached a point where it seems like we're going to have to pass that along to the consumers. Being on the council four years, up to this point, this is probably the toughest decision, I think, that I've had to make on the council, because nobody likes having their rates raised. Nobody likes having their taxes raised. Nobody likes their utilities to increase, and especially in an election year. It was difficult, but as a council, we all kind of decided that let's do these rate increases before the election, just to be honest about... Because we were facing these increases and thought, let's not wait till after the election to let people know we're raising... We're probably going to have to. We haven't voted on it yet, but it, you know, going over the budget, it looks like we're going to have to raise those rates.
Thank you. Ryan?
Yeah, I have to be transparent, first and foremost, because I think I haven't ever served, so I've done a lot of observing and listening, attending meetings, and kind of trying to get a feel for the town and where we're at. So that's where my perspective is coming from. I can see both sides of the issue and why it's challenging from both perspectives. I mean, I think the council has done a very noble thing by absorbing what they can to protect the town, and I think moving forward, they're going to have to find a way to build the trust with the residents, because it's absolutely true that, you know, they're easy to get fired up, and rightfully so, if they're not in the loop. But I think if we can build that trust and be more proactive with allowing them to hear these changes or challenges or things that are coming their way, that they'll be more likely to be a part of that conversation as we go.
Just kind of a quick follow-up. What was, and Rob, you're not going to be able to, or Ryan, you're not going to be able to answer this because you weren't there, but what was the conversation between council members that made you all decide for multiple years to absorb an increase as opposed to going to the residents, explaining it to them, and at least passing on a piece of it?
I've been asking for these rate increases since I got on the council four years ago. It just looked to me like our numbers, we weren't there for... We didn't have the numbers to meet a big emergency. Our trash department loses money all the time, so I'm glad that they're happening now, and I'm glad that they're happening now before the election, because we really need them.
Agnes, what was the conversation that the council had and the decision being made not to pass on at least a portion of these increases?
I think that council felt that we were stable enough with the financing that we had, that we could afford it without passing it on to the residents. We tried very, very hard to protect the residents. Well, we're residents also, so if it's increased, we have to pay, too. And Milton has a lot of elderly retired people, and it will be a burden on several people if there had been increases over the years. And I think it was just, I think we can take care of this ourself. Looking back, I agree with Rob. Maybe it should have been done a little bit differently, but we were protecting the residents as much as we could, and we can't do that anymore. I might say that on a minimum utility bill, very minimum, is $84.14 a month. That bill is going up $4.92 a month with all of the increases. So we're not talking about a large amount of money, but it is going to hopefully get us in the black for all of the various utilities.
Joy, anything you want to add? I didn't want to skip over you, but...
No, I haven't been on long enough to, you know, have been a part of that conversation the past several years, but I agree that it's very much needed.
Okay. You're watching the in-focus candidate forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. We're speaking with candidates running for the Town Council in Milton, Agnes Fisher, Joy May, Robert Simon, and Ryan Kobe. Keep going.
All right, well, while we're on some of these services, and I think, Agnes, you commented on the infrastructure a little bit in your first answer, but my next question is in regard to most small towns, that there's aging infrastructure. How are you all planning ahead, and how are you all dealing with on a continual basis, or do you propose to deal with on a continual basis that aging infrastructure?
Joy, we'll start with you on this one.
We actually had a grant writer in just about two weeks ago that talked to us about our water, getting a grant to replace water lines, but with the sewer loan that we have, it's my understanding that that would be a burden for us to apply for and pay for a large loan again right now. So we will revisit that in the spring to see how our numbers are then, and whether that's a possibility to maybe get a grant. But when you have to have 20% for your part, it's a burden on a small town, but we all are aware that water lines need replaced, and things like sidewalks need replaced along the side streets. So there are issues, but as I said, it's a small town. It's a burden on everyone, but we are looking at what we can do going forward. Hopefully, a grant is a possibility in the future.
Rob?
Yeah, the only way we could, you know, do something on the scale of replacing the water lines would be through a grant. The town itself, we couldn't afford to do that. And even with grant money, we probably could only do a section of the town at a time. Even with grant money, wouldn't be enough money to replace every water line in town. So that's something we were looking like, Joy said, we were talking with the grant writer who wrote our grant for removing the blighted school we had. We're talking with them and an engineering firm, and they're trying to come up with some numbers, and so that's where we're kind of working on the water line issue, which, you know, infrastructure is also, as Joy said, about the sidewalks. When you go down just about any side street in Milton, you have to walk down the street pretty much, because the sidewalks are impassable. So that's something I would love to see is our sidewalks. Even that, again, if we just did a section at a time, you know, if we just worked from Central Avenue and worked our way east and west and replaced those sidewalks, because they're dangerous.
Yeah, I think with the state of the budget and where it's at, and having to sort of wait on bigger projects, you know, from attending the meetings and talking to council members, prioritizing smaller, more urgent or immediate projects is going to have to be where the focus is for the time being. And as Rob said, I mean, you can see just some of the typical wear, whether that's great or not. It's apparent, but that's kind of, it has to be forecasted and sort of projected out in order for us to really do anything with it. So I think urgency is probably where the focus will be for the time being.
Yes.
We, as I mentioned, have had several leaks lately. Of course, those particular leaks have been repaired with new pipes and so forth, but as all of the others have said, it's... I think the gentleman grant writer quoted us as $600,000 to $700,000, and we would have to match 20% of that, and I think we all agree, we can't do that right now. It is in the plan to do it, but it's just something, unfortunately, we just can't do now.
If you have a question for the candidates, we're taking your calls, 973-8587. You can also comment or send us a question on Facebook or through Twitter, @WCTVinfo. We did have a question come in earlier for you, if we can bring that question up. The compensation of Milton's elected officials, clerk, and council is rated second highest in Wayne County, in western Wayne County, excuse me, for the size of the community. Why is the compensation so high? And if elected, what is your feeling on the rate of the compensation of Milton's elected officials? Should it go up, down? You all are talking about how tight money is.
That surprises me, that that's rated second highest, because we get about $200 a month, which doesn't cover... I lose, I give up, I sacrifice a lot of time from work. I'm a finished carpenter, and so I sacrifice my time to, you know, to work to be on the council. And so I'm surprised to see that $200 a month is ranked second highest in western Wayne County. I wish I got paid more, but I'm not doing this for money. You know, I'm doing this because I want to serve the residents that I live with every day.
I know you're not on, you're not getting it, you're running for the office. The conversation, and the conversation not only here, but in most communities, probably this size, is about how funds come in, what's available to you, some of the grant dollars that are available, and some of the larger communities aren't available in a community the size of Milton. What do you think about compensation for elected officials?
I mean, I'm going to second Rob, that I'm not doing this for the money. I found a community that I really enjoy. I mean, not even having lived there for two years, I'm trying to jump on the council, you know, to see if I can make a difference. If the question is, you know, are you willing to take a cut on that? As far as I'm concerned, I'm coming in to make a change, not to get the paycheck. Like we said, it's not enough to cover much, and if that little bit a month is helping at all to the rest of the residents, I mean, it doesn't make a difference to me. I'm not in it for that, to begin with.
Well, definitely, $200 a month is nothing compared to all of the hours and all of the work that we do. It isn't about the money, by no means, but I also think it's rather petty for someone to even question that we get paid $200 a month. We have had, excuse me, how many meetings?
16 since I got on...
And that was what?
In June.
16 meetings since June we have had. Now, if you divide the money up, that's not very much money. So no, none of us are doing this for the money under no circumstances.
Joy?
I was quite surprised when I stepped into this position, that we even got paid, so it's not about the money. It's about helping our residents.
So Milton is one of the only small towns in the area that has their own town marshal. What are the pros and cons of having your own town marshal?
Well, we share our town marshal with Pershing, so we pay the town marshal, but then Pershing reimburses us. So he spends 15 hours a week there and 15 hours a week in our town. A lot of people think that, well, what's that worth, 15 hours? But it's the presence of having a town marshal that I think is good for the town. Some people have suggested that we get that service from Cambridge City, have Cambridge City Police service, serve our town for police. But we... Somebody from Cambridge City, a Cambridge City police officer cannot enforce our town ordinances. Now, they can stop a crime, they can issue traffic citations and that sort of thing, but they cannot issue, they cannot work with our, enforce our town ordinances.
Yeah, I also think it's important to have that seen in such a small town. I mean, that has an impact on what we do and what we're capable of, you know, whether or not we could extend that out again. Yeah, if we can't enforce ordinances, or we have issues even, you know, with presence, because they're going to be extended somewhere else, I mean, I think we're lucky to have that in such a small area.
Okay.
Having a town marshal, I think, is extremely important, and I don't think that we should do without him. As Rob said, for one thing, we can contract out, but it's going to cost us a lot more money than what we pay our town marshal, plus any of the expenses that we have for our town marshal, the car and so forth. It will cost us more, and it has been suggested that maybe county get involved in this, too. If I am correct, there are usually no more than four county sheriffs on duty during a shift. And after this was brought up at a meeting, I asked our town marshal, okay, if we have an emergency right now and you're not here, okay, who can be here? He said, well, Cambridge is busy. All four of the county sheriffs are busy, too. You're going to have to wait in line. Now, that right there tells me that we need our marshal, if not just for the presence, because things are a lot nicer and a lot calmer when we have our town marshal. So I think he's needed.
I also believe he's needed. I, in fact, have contacted the Cambridge City Police Department to get a current figure, which I haven't gotten a response yet, so that we can respond to our residents as to what the cost difference would be. But the presence of having our own town marshal, I think, is very important. If we were to do away with that, it would be next to impossible to ever reapply and get a marshal again down the roads. Excuse me. I think it is very important to keep him.
You're watching the in-focus candidate forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. We're speaking with four of the seven residents of Milton that are running for Town Council, Ryan Kobe, Robert Simon, Joy May, Agnes Fisher. I'm going to ask each one of you all, because you're running, you're just starting out. You've said you've been there a couple of years. I'm wondering from each one of you, what are the one or two priorities that you have in your mind that have decided to make you run or rerun for office? Ryan, we're going to start with you.
Yeah, for me, attending council meetings, the low attendance and some of the... There are dominant voices that are very much in a minority, and I think something that's really spurred me on is to get conversations started with more residents of Milton. I think we have to build the trust back up with the council and really just bridge some communication, because I hear a lot of background conversation. Social media is huge, and then you go to a meeting and you have 1% of the town in the meeting, which, you know, I think communicating issues that are arising, conversations, extending those invites, and then ultimately just being present, you know, for me, getting out there and trying to figure out what really concerns the residents is my driving force. Because if I can't hear those conversations, and I'm only hearing a piece at every council meeting, and the council's doing what they can to tackle whatever issues are coming up, I know that I've seen them surprised before with some of the conversations that have arisen, because nobody's coming forward and saying, hey, we really need to talk about this. And so... And so that's really driving me to go out there and say, why aren't we talking about this now?
Four years ago, I had no plans of running for town council, not even a thought in my mind about running for town council. And somebody approached me and asked me if I'd be interested in, in running. And I saw, gee, I've never been, this is my first experience being directly involved with government. And I said, well, let me think about it. And they, they said to me, well, tomorrow's the deadline to sign up.
No pressures.
So it was probably a good thing, I didn't get a whole lot of time to think about it, and I signed up the next day. And I have not regretted one minute of it. This council that I've been working with has been just a great bunch of people. We, we all seem to work really well together. It's, it's, you know, it's just helping people every day, and everybody comes to the council with, everybody on the council comes to them, comes to them with that feeling of like, we're just here to do the people's business. To run for reelection, all the past experiences of the past four years, all the things we were able to accomplish, the people we were able to help, I want to see, I want to do more of that. And I want to be part of the, the future planning and, and all the other, because we've accomplished quite a few things, but there's still a lot more to be done. You'd be surprised how much there is to do in a little tiny town.
What are one or two of the priorities that you want to get done?
Well, that infrastructure issue, to me, is a big thing. The water lines concern me, I'm concerned about lead fittings and, and that sort of thing in our water lines. So to me, that's, that's, I feel like that's an urgent thing, you know, after what happened in Flint, Michigan, I, this happens in a lot of little towns across the country, is that they, those, those things like water lines are neglected. So that's one thing I'd like to see. And then coming up with a plan, we had our, that school removed, so we've got this big open space now, and so being part of the planning of what, what used to, what, what to use that plot of land for, so I want to be part of that.
Joy?
I agree with everything Rob said. The one thing I would like to see, which Ryan touched on, is more community. Going back to what used to be years ago of people helping each other. Neighbors, you know, if their yard needs mowed and they're unable to get out there and do it, go mow it for them. Coming together as, as a group, as a community, and doing for one another without the fear in this day and age of, what am I getting out of it? Or will there be consequences if I help and get hurt? Or instead of worrying about those things, we need to come together as a community.
Agnes, priorities for you?
My priorities for wanting to continue, I think, just pretty much reflects what the others have said. We have accomplished a lot, but I think, and probably one of the big things, as Ryan said, was, we have to get communication and understanding, and I want to add follow-up on any issues that are in town. So often, we talk about it, and then, for whatever reason it might be, it kind of gets forgotten about. It gets put back a little bit, and then the residents don't know what's going on. And this is where the communication comes in. I'm like Ryan, I, I want to talk to the people, to listen to them, and to hear what they are saying, and then to communicate as far as, okay, this is the issue, what do you think we can do about it? Now, we can't always solve it the way they want it solved, of course, but just working with the community and knowing, let them know that we are interested, I think is probably one of my, my biggest things, because I think that's a weakness right now.
Okay, do a quick follow-up, and then I'll turn it back to Melissa. You all have a problem, or say that there's a problem with communication. It's not a large community. Ask potential council members or council members now, how does the council make that communication happen between you and the residents? What mechanisms do you use?
Me? I, I do agree, we need to reach out more. Very few people attend the council meetings. It's usually only if they've got a gripe. And, and then it's difficult, even if, it's difficult for somebody to come to a public forum and complain about their name. So it's, we, we always ask people, well, come to the meetings, come to the meetings, second Tuesday of the month, you know, and very few people show up. And last year, I was canvassing for somebody running for office, and I was going, walking through Milton, and it was just, we ended up talking about, I introduced myself and said, I'm on town council. Well, we ended up talking about me and town council and the problems of the town. So that was a great experience to, just to see, to actually get out there and, even when we're not running for reelection or elections, is to get out and knock door to door and talk to people. I, I recently started using social media. I never used to, I'm not a, a tech guy, but I, I started after our meetings, looking to see if I can answer any questions online. I'll post, you know, what the meeting maybe was about, or just something about the meeting on Facebook or something. We have, not a town page, but there's people who have a, a social media page regarding Milton, so.
Joy, what do you think? How does the council make, because you all have a chance to do it, how do you make the communication better?
Well, Agnes was instrumental in getting a Reach Alert program started, which is a phone system that the residents can sign up for free of charge, and they can be notified when there's a meeting, if there's a boil order, if they're going to flush the hydrants. So she and I have been going door to door, passing those out, trying to get the residents to sign up for that. And as many doors as we've knocked on, there's only a handful of people that have actually signed up for it, and it's very simple to sign up. But I think we've encountered a lot of conversation by knocking on doors and introducing ourselves. And like Rob said, that's, that's a good way to communicate. I mean, it's not something we would do all the time, but we hear of other issues that we've tried to address with those residents that we've come across that have had questions or problems.
Following on what Joy has said, yes, a lot of the residents that we have talked to when we were out with the Reach Alert, mentioned, well, I have this problem, or I have that problem. I have made it a point to go back to their home with information on whatever their problem was, trying to help them solve it, or let them know that we are interested, and let's see what we can do about it.
Ryan, you started this, you were the first one to say, I'm here because I don't think there's good communication.
Yeah.
You're running, what are your ideas for making the communication between council and residents better?
I mean, to be entirely honest, and it's already been mentioned, you can't make everyone happy with one universal decision. It's not going to work. And as representatives of the entire town, you're going to have to find the best ways to reach them all. And I think, you know, prioritizing which methods work the best. Reach Alert is amazing, I think it's a fantastic idea. It's, it's quick for, for alerts that people should absolutely know, you know, if we have urgency, it's very quick for them. But social media seems to be where most of the, the gripes, as Rob said, right? That's where most of that sort of chaos starts to brew a little bit. And those conversations, I think, can be healthy on social media. That's just where we've headed over the years, and that's where we're at. But overall, you've got to put your feet on the ground and meet them where they're at.
That's true.
Yeah, as we said, we have a lot of older residents, we have a very mixed population with age ranges, so walking around, letting them see that you genuinely care and you want to have those conversations, probably is going to have a much better impact than any technology that we can push toward them.
Thanks. Melissa?
I want to move the conversation a little bit toward blighted properties. I know it was mentioned, I can't remember which one of you mentioned earlier, the school being removed. So that building has now been removed, there's been a home removed and a gazebo built, I think someone had mentioned to me. Do you see other needs in the town where blighted properties need to be addressed? And if so, how do you anticipate council addressing?
I don't know, just turn it, oh, okay. Oh, yes, there definitely are other properties that need to be addressed. I wish that we could get the home grant, like we have had in the past, and I don't know the proper name of it, but it was a grant that local people could get free of charge to have improvements on their home. And that was a lifesaver for so many people who couldn't afford to fix up their home. That is one thing that I would like to see done. Also, just take some pride in your neighborhood. Many of our blighted homes don't need to look like they do, because there's people living there, and they could clean it up. There are also many homes that are empty because the people have left, for, for whatever reason. Those are the challenges. And you don't get that done overnight. You either have to have legal action with them, or the people have to figure out, oh, we have a home in town now, that the resident was very willing to give it to us to tear it down, or to burn it down. We can't do that. So now, she's stuck with it again. And that's, that's a shame, because she really wants to make the neighborhood look better, but she can't afford it.
Well, being new, I'm not sure what the answers are to blight properties. I know there's a program, blight elimination program, that we should maybe look into and see what the process is to apply for that, and maybe we could take care of some of those properties that actually do need to just come down. But being new, I'm not sure, baby steps. So it is something that's on my mind, so hopefully we can address that.
One of the things I love about Indiana is, is the old architecture here. So it breaks my heart when I see old, old houses and old buildings coming down. Broke my heart when that school came down. I was against it at first, but once, once things moved along, and I realized that I was really the only one on council that did not want to bring that building down, and so I figured I better, I better just get with it and make it work. There, there are some blighted homes in town that we are, like Agnes said, we're trying to address, and it's difficult. There's, there's legal costs, and the town doesn't have much money, just in, just in legal costs alone to try to address. It, it's difficult enough to address people not mowing their grass, let alone trying to remove cars or, or tear down a blighted house. So, you know, those are things, more things in the future that we need to, we need to address as we're going forward.
I mean, Joy said she didn't know how to respond to it, but I'm actually going to jump in from something she said previously about helping your neighbors. So my wife is very passionate about starting up a volunteer committee or organization, and she's been really just whispering in my ear and pushing, you know, to, to set up some meetings. And that doesn't really address properties that absolutely need to be tore down, or we need to do something with long-term, because they're, they're going to, it's going to be an eyesore and a hazard, not to mention a hazard, it's going to be a danger in the future. But I think to prevent some of that, I, I think being neighborly, and, and honestly, forming some sort of committee with folks that really just want to jump out there. And I know life is busy, and there are already a lot of moving pieces. I mean, they've all said how much work they put into this, for very little, because they're trying to impact the town as a whole. And that's more work, but, I mean, it goes right along with the message that we're trying to send, that if you want to impact, you got to get out there and do something about it. So I'm, I'm going to agree with what Joy said for a previous question.
Okay, if I can jump in for just a minute? But you're not talking about just council members, you're talking about residents, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Try to, try to branch out.
This is getting everyone involved then, yeah.
Yeah, we've been, we've been talking about setting something up and trying to garner some interest if we can. So we'll see where that goes.
You're watching the Unfocused Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. I'm going to do this, I think there was another question that we had come in earlier, and I don't know whether we covered it or not, so if we have it, we can bring it up. Does council think it's okay to withhold multiple years? Okay, we kind of talked about this earlier, but does council think it's okay to withhold multiple years of small utility increases from citizens which can impact their budgets and quality of life now that you want to make up some of that revenue lost since 2014? I think we kind of bounced on that a little bit earlier. So we'll kind of let that go, because unless somebody wants to jump in on that one again.
Well, I, I agree with that comment, that to just, you know, we've, we've been trying to be kind to the residents and not raise their rates, but it, we really should have been just given small increases over, over time, rather than now all of a sudden we've got to jump five to 10%. So I would agree with that comment, that it would be better for us to raise rates, you know, smaller annually, rather than, you know, wait five, six years and then, and then have them jump up.
All at once. And the money that the council has put in, you all are talking now about not being able to do certain things, could that money that you've used to kind of help the residents be used for some of the infrastructure projects that you're talking about right now? You're shaking your head, no?
Not necessarily. It's kind of funny, we don't have a pot of money that we can just take money out of here for this and money out of here for this. There's different funds. And if you have, correct me if I'm wrong, if you have, okay, the sewer bill, money, we cannot take any money out of sewer to pay for water. Therefore, we can't take out of water to pay for sewer either. So we, we have to remember, some of this money that we've talked about wouldn't help anyway, because it isn't in the right fund.
Okay. Anybody else want to jump in before we move on?
I mean, I'll just add in that I think it's a frustrating reality, I mean, we've already, we have already addressed it, and it is frustrating, and I understand that, that pushback, absolutely, but it, it's also where we're at. So I, I think residents are frustrated, and then us included, you know, like Rob has already said, you know, that we, we probably should have spaced that out better so that we didn't absorb it, and it was easier to take at this point. I mean, we have to figure out ways to do this better in the future. I mean, if we're going to bring something to the table, it's how do we avoid this next round, not where are we at right now and we're angry about it? That's understandable, it's what do we do next? How do we avoid that with the next round?
Okay.
In regard to the property where the school formerly sat, have there been ideas either by the community or by other council members of what to do with that property? And what are your thoughts on those?
Joy starts this one.
We actually sent out a survey, I believe in July, asking the residents to vote on what they would like to see it done, done with it. But we didn't get an overwhelming response, and the responses that we didn't get were not a majority of suggestions. Making it senior housing was one suggestion, making it just a community area, maybe with a stage for future events that might happen in the town. So there wasn't an overwhelming response and agreement, so I think we've kind of decided we'll just let it be a green space for the five years that we have to allow, and then kind of revisit that and decide maybe what we can do at that point, whether it's to sell it, maybe bring business into town, or use it for the green space and, and a community area that might be enjoyed.
Okay. Rob?
Yes, the, you know, there was a stipulation with the, with the OCA grant that we received to remove the building. It can't be sold for development for a minimum five years, right? So unless, now, with the town, what the town could do is, if, if we could find some useful purpose, since the town owns the property, if we could find some useful purpose, we could build a structure. We thought it just had to sit vacant for five years. But if we, if, and like Joy said, we put out a survey and wanted to get people's input on, you know, what we could use this plot of land for now. Like she said, some considerations were senior housing and a community center, something like that. So we have that, we have that limitation as far as development, so I, it looks like we're probably going to, we're going to try to fix it up. We, we kind of repaired the basketball court that was there when the school was there. when the school was there. And so we're going to try to fix that up a little better so kids can, and, you know, kids are already playing on it. So kids throwing a football on it. And so it's a nice open area now for that, that part of the town, that neighborhood to, for kids to actually kind of go and, and play on. And then we're just going to have to wait down the road to decide what, you know, what, what the best use for the town and the people would be.
Ryan, ideas?
Don't have a lot to say on it now. I mean, it just happened recently. I think it had a lot of history. Looking at residents, you know, social media posts, a lot of pictures from yearbooks. You know, there was a lot of sort of bittersweet memories when that came down. And, you know, as was mentioned, that's, that's history for the town. And so, you know, that's always a tough decision. So I think whatever happens moving forward, with such a proud town with, with a lot of strong history, we just have to consider what's going to be best to give back to the residents. I don't have ideas, but I know that it has to be part of the consideration because it was, there was a little bit of heartache when that went down, I believe. So, yeah.
That's true. And as Rob said, it was, it was, both of you, very bittersweet. I didn't want the school torn down, but there was no choice because I knew what was inside of it. I knew all of the problems. I knew the town and past councils have worked for years to get that repaired. And it could not get done. So the only choice was, was to tear it down. The property now is being well-used by the kids. And I'm not talking about just the little kids. I'm talking about teenagers, older kids also. And so I'm thinking in the future, it would be a wonderful place for a community center, if I want to use that term. But as Ryan says, bring it back to the public. Now, one thing that we did do, there is a beautiful arch built out of the front of the school. And what am I supposed to call this?
Memorial.
Okay, a memorial, yes. And it is just beautiful. All the bricks and everything that was on the entryway. So we did preserve something. So I'm hoping that maybe we can continue along with a community involvement of some kind.
Anything? Last question.
So nearly-
Under 10 minutes, so we're going to ask you to keep your answers short.
Okay. Nearly a year ago, the town of Milton and Washington Township reorganized the fire department. Can you share your thoughts regarding this, how it's gone, and whether there are more changes that need to happen? Rob, why don't you start us off?
I'm going to ask you to be about a minute.
Okay. Well, when, when I came on, I heard about this fire department. Just, it just needed, it needed to be restructured. And so in this past year, we finally got, got that done and restructured that. We now are 50/50 partners with Washington Township. We share 50/50 all the costs for the fire department. And I really have seen a boost in morale. And personally, I have, I have an increase of pride in our fire department that, that was missing for, for a while. So.
Right.
Yeah, I wasn't around for that conversation. I mean, I will say that they're usually represented at the meetings, which is awesome. They're always there with updates. And I know that they have been active with pushing for some upgrades and things to make it more efficient and even better. So I think we're being very proactive. And yeah, that's the observation we're, what I got.
And I will to, to address that is we weren't getting, for years, we weren't getting those, we didn't have representation from the fire department at the council meetings. And so we had no idea what was going on over there. And so now, we do get those, we have, the fire chief will, comes to our monthly meetings and he brings a report and.
Okay. Agnes?
Our fire department is becoming a fire department to be proud of again. And I think the general Wayne County area is respecting our fire department now. And that's the biggest thing. The community respects them. And the county respects them. And it was very well needed.
I wasn't on council when that restructuring happened, but I'm glad that it did. I think moving forward, we're seeing a lot of positivity there. They participate in community events that are going on in town, whether it's food related or whatever. They might have things that they, they do at the fire station. And as a resident, I'm happy to know that we have a good fire department now in case any of us need it.
And Ryan can, and can talk about that. I think his, fire at his residence was the biggest one that Milton has had for a while as far as calling in other departments. So he saw first class.
Yeah. Yeah. And not to speak to that too much, but I mean, the response was amazing.
Yeah.
I mean, the support was phenomenal. It's part of the reason, and try to push back and do something for the town. Yeah.
Great. Thank you all very much for agreeing to be here. We greatly appreciate the conversation. Agnes Fisher, Joy May, Robert Simon, Ryan Colby. Also on the ballot, John Nolan, Hugh Payne, and Philip Edwards are all also running but could not join us this evening. But thank you all very much for being here. We appreciate it greatly. I want to remind you real quickly that we are having our annual meeting coming up on September 17. We will actually be presenting our partners, the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce with an award, our producer of the year award. So congratulations for that.
Thank you.
We appreciate you all-
Thank you very much.
-being there, being a sponsor with us. If you want to find out a little bit more about what we've been doing over the last year, show up, 5 o'clock on the 17th at the Leland. Thanks to Eastern Indiana Works for helping us out with that. Next week's In Focus, and I may be jumping around. Okay, we're going to have Dublin, September 12. We will have council members or potential council members from Dublin. On the 26th, we will start with the clerk of Richmond. The 12th was canceled because there were four people running for three seats in Fountain City. One person, we are told, has dropped out. So that is now three people for three seats. It's not a contested race, which is why we have removed that. City Clerk of Richmond coming up on the 26th of September. We will then have Richmond Common Councils District 2 and 3 on October 3. Richmond Common Council at Large on October 10. And then on October 17, City of Richmond, three candidates running for mayor, we will have them in studio. Those last three, October 3, 10, and 17, will all be 90-minute programs. So we hope you can join us for that. It is going to be a busy weekend around the area. Lots of things to get out and see. Pottery Palooza is taking place from 10 until 4 at the Richmond Art Museum. If you like theater, check out Ripcord at the Richmond Civic Theater. Those performances, you can go to rct.org for more information. Canal Days is taking place in Cambridge City, September 7 and 8, from 9 to 4. Jeanette Records Walk of Fame is being presented on Saturday, the 7. Richmond's NAACP chapter is having their annual unity and scholarship banquet on Saturday evening. And also on September 7, evenings at Elstrow, First Bank Richmond presents that. So lots of things going on. Get out and enjoy this weekend. Thank you very much for being part of this week's In Focus Candidate Forum. We'll see you again next Thursday night at 6:00 PM. Have a great weekend.